Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city council meeting here October 12th. And I would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And a pledge of allegiance, if you all stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If you see an empty chair down here, it's not because we missed John, but our city attorney is -- we don't -- no, we still miss you, but that's not why. Our city attorney is joining us by phone. And she'll be listening in and probably, yeah, listening better than when she's here. With that, could we -- could we have a real roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Sarah Gossett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Thomas.
I am here.
We have a new city clerk.
Yes. And I would like to welcome our District III supervisor here this evening, Ms. Wendy Thomas, otherwise known as Honey. Ceremonial matters. First up, so this is a -- it's always been bittersweet having this conversation. And we are here to honor and recognize the years and years of service, which I think we've already done 10 years ago, but we get another swipe at it now. And, you know, just a quick summary. He started with the city in 89. He was hired as city manager in 2000, retired as city manager in 2000, stayed on as our attorney, and then -- and that was in 2011. And in 2021, today, no, somewhere, first of August, somewhere right around there, he retired. And, you know, it's truly an honor to be mayor at a time when you're retiring. Because I remember back when I was probably in the early 90s, and I don't know when Jerry Bennett was on the city council, but that's who I worked for at the time. And I would always hear about -- and I was like a kid at a candy store, listening to all the stories about city council and all the going-ons that were happening in the city and how they were figuring it out. And it was something that I was always enamored with. And your name came up constantly. And in a good way. And one of the interesting things, somebody -- I was talking to somebody out here just a second ago, and they -- and they -- we came to the conclusion that I don't think anybody's ever gotten mad at John. Or I -- and I don't think anybody's ever come to the meeting upset because -- upset at you. At least, I don't think so. It may have happened, but --
Oh, yeah.
But if it was --
I'm sorry, but I remember too many things.
But if it happened, they probably deserved it.
Sorry, John.
So, but we don't want to go too far back in the Wayback Machine here. The heart of this is, is that you have served our community in probably the most professional way of anybody that has served this community in the city. And that's not to disregard all the other professional people we have at this community in our city and our staff. And you exemplify what that is. And you have led our community. You have been in the background, serving our community. And you have always done it in a way that you're not the limelight, but you make sure that things get done. And you've made sure that our city has thrived through, I think, about three different economic downturns. That's going from 2000 to 2008, and as a city attorney, going through this last situation. And you have been -- I know that you've been a great sounding board for Cleve over the years. And you've been a great friend and sounding board for me in dealing with issues here. And I can probably say every one of the council members that are in here today feel the same way. And one of the things that I've started tonight is I started putting out mayor's cups. And you get my first mayor's cup. And it says, "For the positive light you shine in our community." Mayor's Cup 2021. never once has our light diminished because of you. And you have brought great light over the years to our community, and I cannot express the appreciation that I have, knowing you, working with you over the last 20 years that I've been involved, and just what you've done for our city. And it, you know, there's a lot of options out there. And you chose Placerville to call home. You chose Placerville to love, and it shines throughout. So with that, I want to express my most gracious gratitude for what you've done. So, thank you. If there's anybody else, I'm gonna -- go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, John, I mean, everything that the mayor just said, and, you know, I agree 100% with, you know, being the -- well, not quite the new kid on the block anymore, but certainly, thank you for all the help you gave me, starting out from Historical Advisory Committee to Planning Commission to being on city council. And I think the great thing, John, is that you always knew who your client was, and that's the city of Placerville, not anybody else. And that was to protect the citizens and the city of Placerville. So whether it's something I wanted to hear or not wanted to hear, you always gave the right answer to what was best for the city. And I think that's such a key thing, because it's not about trying to make three people appear happy, or four, or five, or whatever. It was about doing what's best for the city. And I think sometimes that gets -- sometimes that's gotten lost in translation in other places. And so I think that's a huge credit to your integrity and to your character. And we will sorely miss you. I know you're still here, so we can always hunt you down and find you. But I do wish you, you know, many safe travels and other fun things as you go on to your next journey here. So again, thank you, John.
John, you were city manager when Steve and I first started really getting involved in some tense times. And you were just always so gracious and inviting and really, you know, encouraged Steve and I both to be more involved, you know, work through the frustration, listen to our concerns, and just so appreciative of, you know, that government welcoming us in and to be part of it and be more involved. And so sorry to see you go, but so excited for the retirement for you to enjoy. Just thank you so much.
Well, it's hard to follow up on everything that Dennis said, because he said it so well. But I do just want to express my gratitude for all those times that I called you in the first couple of years of my term with lots of different legal questions about what could and couldn't be done. And you didn't always give me the answer that I wanted to hear, but you said it in a very nice way. And I appreciated just, you know, just hearing it like it was from someone that I trusted, had, you know, the needs of the city at heart and the expertise to really, you know, I never doubted that you knew exactly the right answer. And I just appreciated all the time you took to walk me through different situations.
My turn. Well, again, usually here I am, the oldest one on the kid on the block bet. John and I go back a long, long time. And I'm gonna bring up my late husband, Carl. He was very much affiliated with John and the city and everything that went on. And I've had the pleasure of going, you know, that there -- I know you've all heard of the cap-to-cap trips where the cities and the counties go back to Washington, D.C. But John always had his own trip. And so I got to go on a couple of John's trips, and they were the Red Eye, where we booked the cheapest plane trip and travel at midnight and did our own thing and probably got more done than those that went back for the big three or four day or so. But I'll always treasure those memories. They're just great. And just all our affiliation, friendships, and advice and all the things that's been said. But I'm gonna miss you, but I'm so happy you're -- I love to see people retire and still have a good, healthy, long life ahead of them. And I -- you got your knee operated on, you can start skiing now, and everything's gonna be great. So, anyway, hope you'll come to our meetings once in a while or find some reason to visit with us. So, maybe that's wishful thinking, but anyway, keep in touch. Thank you.
Cleve.
I guess I'm up here, I can take a --
Yes, please do.
John, I want to tell you thanks also. I still remember the very first time I met John. I came up here before I was hired, actually, and was still during the recruitment process and just sat down and talked with him. And felt really good after that about the city and, you know, learning things about the city. And then, over time, John and I obviously have worked extremely close over the last 10 years, and it's been wonderful to have that cooperation between city attorney and city manager. And I really appreciated that. So it's been great working with him, but most of all, I think I've gained a friend over the last 10 years, and that's what I value the most. So, thank you, John. And with that, I think while I'm here, if it's all right, Mayor --
Yes, please do.
We have a little gift we got for you, John. If you'll join me over here at this table, I'll unveil the gift.
We will have opportunity for the public to speak as well, too, so after this.
Unveil the gift.
You didn't know what it is?
It's got a little insignia of everyone.
Oh, on the bottom. Oh, that's very cool.
Not sure what to say. It's so unusual being on this side of the dice. Taken a little getting used to. I really don't have anything prepared, so this is kind of dangerous, especially when your attorney, they tell you, always be prepared. Well, I didn't really prepare any remarks, but I want to thank you all very, very much for these extremely gracious and kind words. Not sure they were all that well-deserved, but thank you, thank you very, very much. The last 32 years, it's been a labor of love, my love for this city. I fell in love with the city in 1970 on a visit and then moved here in September of that year. It's been a love affair ever since then. And when 1989 came along and Patty's late husband, Carl, asked me to consider becoming city attorney, he didn't know, but he didn't have to twist my arm. It was done. He had me at the very beginning of that offer. And I'm glad I did. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve this city, its citizens. The city has a unique and special history, and it has special citizens, people who care for each other, people who care for the community. And it's a real honor to serve those kinds of people. There's a true story, and some of you may have heard it. Goes back to when Marshall Hospital was just beginning. And they were having some tough financial times and couldn't make payroll one week. And so the hospital administrator came down to Main Street and basically asked the merchants for contributions so that he could make payroll. And the merchants did. They gave him themselves and gave up money so the hospital was able to make its payroll. That tells a lot about the people of this community and who they are. And we still see, I think, that spirit today. If you look back just recently at what the community did for the victims of the Caldor Fire, you see the same sort of spirit. And it makes you really proud to serve this city. It's amazing. And I had a lot of help on those 32 years as well. I gotta get off that topic, I'm gonna start crying. You know, as a single city attorney, you don't have anybody to talk to. And you like to bounce your legal theories off of people and see if they make some sense or not. I tried it with Cleve, tried to get him to be an attorney, but he wouldn't have any part of it. So I do have to thank some fellow city attorneys who were always there when I needed some advice and would tell me if I was way off track or, "That's the craziest idea I ever heard. Driscoll, go back to drawing boards," you know, type advice. So I had a lot of people who did that and helped me along the way. I also want to thank the city, the employees. Employees of this city are some of the most dedicated, wonderful people that I've ever met. And that is another reason why I stayed as long as I did, and it's what I really miss, is those people. Whether it's a rank-and-file employee or a department head, the department heads were all great in providing me with the information I needed so I could make decent decisions in terms of what we had to do. City managers, I was fortunate enough to have mostly really good city managers. Cleve has been especially exceptional. You got a gem there, so don't let him go. There was one city manager, I gotta tell you, though, I won't name him, but he was exceptionally difficult. He wouldn't follow my advice, wouldn't listen to me. He was here from 2000 to 2010, and it was all I could do to get rid of him, so, you know. Any rate, we'll pass that. City councils, city council has been extremely supportive, excuse me, in everything that I've done. I really appreciate that, excuse me, as your city attorney. City councils can be difficult to deal with. And we had some difficult ones over the years. But generally speaking, the councils that I've served with have had the best interests of this city at heart and have done an exceptional job and made my job a lot easier. So I'm not gonna take up any more of your time, but I just want to say thank you so very, very much for the opportunity that you gave me. I loved it, and I love this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, good, thank you. No pressure.
It's too late, John, it's too late.
All right. So what I would like to do, you know, John has been here for 30 years. I'd like to take a little more time and provide opportunity for some others to provide some of their thoughts and share some of their love towards you, John. So if anybody would like to join us at the podium and share some thoughts, that'd be
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the warm welcome, I appreciate it. And I'm Wendy Thomas, and it is a privilege to honor John, honor John Driscoll tonight. John, I know we're supposed to address the council, but I'm gonna ignore that, I'm gonna address John. John, it was a real privilege to work with you over these years. You took a new green council member and shook me under your wings and showed me the ropes and made me feel comfortable. And that was such a blessing to me in helping navigate the difficult issues that faces this council. And you kept us on the straight and narrow and, like this council articulated, always making sure that we kept the city in mind with the decisions and protecting her and loving her and guiding her within the bounds of the law and within the bounds of our love for community. And you helped us do that through your expertise and through your deep love for our community. So impressed that you, you know, not only served as our city attorney, but served as our city manager and attorney at the same time. I mean, who does that? And your deep commitment to our city also helped us weather the downturns, like you articulated. You helped us get through the recession. I mean, my goodness, you know, you could have charged us a whole lot more for your expertise, but you didn't because you cared about our city. And that is a gift that needs to be recognized and valued. And beyond that, you spend your time loving our community. It was a privilege to serve with you on the Marshall Hospital Board. You've served on the Marshall Hospital Foundation Board as well in lots of other capacities. I mean, our city has been incredibly blessed by your leadership, and I know your love for our city will continue. But privileged to serve you and to honor you tonight and just wish you and Pam well in what's next, but know that you leave a deep legacy, and your love for our community will continue to be felt. Thank you so much.
All right. I knew there was come more.
It must be my turn.
It is.
Well, I'm probably in competition with Patty to claim the title of, "I knew John the longest." We go back a ways, for sure. But all those years of knowing John, I think, gives me a perspective of not only a friend, but a coworker and really understanding the genuine character of John. And all the things that you've said, I echo wholeheartedly. And I'd like to add some other things, but I can't talk about the camping trips or the wine drinking and those things, so I won't. But I think one thing that the public never really gets that deserves talking about is that, I think you could notice, that the city of Placerville over the years has never really had a scandal of sorts. We've had rough times and controversies because we're a rambunctious kind of place. But generally speaking, things just keep moving along. The departments work like departments ought to work. I think the public has a high expectation of things will continue to function and never give it another thought. But the truth of the matter is that there is an enormous amount of complexity with all kinds of issues. And things go wrong, and they've been taken care of in the office without any fuss because John comes into the breach and helps solve whatever problems there are so that things just keep on working for the public without any notice. And I really think that should be brought up more because there are wonderful people, and John is one of the most stellar, that just has the highest priority that things will work for people. I think that's why we love this town so much. Also, just take a second to speak to honesty and integrity, that I never, ever, in the years I was on the council and the planning commission, had any doubt when John gave an opinion that it was an erroneous opinion or something that I had to challenge, that I had complete trust in it. It was obvious the case, that it was a good opinion, and you could go to the bank on it. That was what held everybody in good stead. So the constancy and the trust and the integrity, I think, second to none. So we've been incredibly fortunate to have you, but I've been incredibly fortunate to be your friend as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Council. A pleasure to be back here again this evening and speaking about something a whole lot more important than PG&E. And that is the gift that John Driscoll has been to this city. His tears this evening are very genuine indeed. And I think in the 14 years that I was a council member and worked with him, and in my early years as a planning commissioner, when I first met John Driscoll to get his legal opinion on something that the planning commission was doing, I have always been very impressed by his love for the law and the written word. This man is simply alive when he is interpreting the law and all of its intricacies, down to every single word. It is so obvious that this is what his soul really strives and loves. And to have that in a city manager was an amazing thing. And I was blessed to have him as my first city manager and be a part of what we affectionately called the Driscoll Discount Tours. And those were indeed red-eye flights, lowest possible cost, cheapest possible hotel in Washington, D.C. We would show up at all hours of the night and day, oh, it's those people from Placerville. He actually had me work as a flight attendant on the last flight we took. It was a different -- thankfully, it was a wonderful time, and it showed, again, his passion for the community and going back and doing what was an important thing. And myself, former council member Bob Salazar, former council member Carl Hagan, and others, and Patty and myself had gone back. And we went on, literally, as I said, on our own dime and our own time, and we were successful. And those trips, combined, brought back several million dollars of federal tax dollars to this community. And those projects still exist today as monuments to what we were able to do as part of John's passion. And we were able to make it so much more than the famous cap-to-cap trip. So it was an honor to be a part of those, John, and riding the back of the plane, we didn't get up, there was no sense, we were the last people off. That's okay. It was an amazing time. As great a city manager as John was, he was an amazing city attorney. And again, back to his passion for the written word and the law. As has been mentioned, there's a lot the public doesn't realize. In my terms as mayor, John and Cleve were always available, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, because the city runs. And things come up at the most inconvenient times. And important decisions need to be made, they need to be made calmly and with thoughtful consideration. And John Driscoll was always a part of that team, no matter what the day or time it was. So John, I am so happy to see that he's gotten his knee fixed. I didn't know he was gonna go skiing, but that would be awesome. And I'm so happy to see that he's often enjoying his retirement. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. And that was three of our past mayors of the city of Placerville. And also, thank you all for your service as well. Would there be anybody else would like to speak? With that, I'll go ahead and close this public comment moment. And once again, thank you, John. And I'm just gonna leave it there. All right, moving on. And I hate to move on, because that means, I mean, this is it, John, this is your last retirement. We're done?
Getting my stuff.
Okay.
You can go home and use your new mechanism there. I think we should tell, Dennis, you should share what it is that we gave him.
It is a very fancy wine bottle opener. And so, yeah. Yeah. Yes. And it's engraved, would you read the inscription? The inscription? Oof. John Driscoll, city attorney, proceeded Placerville city attorney January 2011 to August 2021. Thank you for your dedicated service in the city of Placerville. Yep. Thank you very much. Thank you for doing that. All right, goodbye. All right. So I have two mayor's cups, and I'll be doing this for the rest of the year. Mayor's cups at each meeting, recognizing, and what I would like to do is, and the reason the mayor's cups have come up is because there's been so much turmoil, there's been, you know, a lot of things going on that you've seen different characters show up in different ways. And I would like to recognize the people on every cup that's inscribed, that's the word, "For the positive light you shine in our community." And I want to recognize people in our community that have done, and there's a lot of people. And so if I don't get everybody, that's gonna happen, probably. But I'm gonna recognize a few people each meeting, just to call them out and express the appreciation for the light they shine in our community. And tonight, the second one I get to give out is for Charlie, Charlie McDonald. And his time up at Upper Room has been meaningful. It's been life-changing for people. It has recognized a significant need in our community. recognized a significant need in our community, and I will say with complete honesty, we have not always agreed on policy. We have not always agreed on issues, on how to solve things. But you know what? Every time that I've called Charlie up, and I know that other people have that have sat in the seat, he shows up and has a meaningful conversation, and he's always willing to find that common ground, to look for solutions, to recognize the challenges of the situation that he is in, and that it presents for our community, and seek to find solutions at times. And sometimes there's no solutions, and sometimes there is. And we find our way, and we have found our way through many solutions through the years. And I think that's critically important. And I remember something you said to me, and you said, "You said once, 'At the end of the day, we are all humans.'" And he says, "You know, I understand the problems, I know it's not good, I know that what we're doing over here," or something, "but at the end of the day, these are humans, and I'm going to love them." And you did, and you have, and that love and that care has made a difference for people. And so with that, I want to thank you for the light that you have shined in our community. And here's your cup.[684.62][684.62](APPLAUSE). So do I get a few minutes to talk? I don't know.[702.12][702.12](LAUGHING) I'm going to take it. Go right ahead. Thank you. It's been a journey. I've been in this town for 23 years. I grew up in the Bay Area, and passing through this town, and this was when you drove 50 through downtown, and saying, "I'd sure love to live in this town someday." And 40 years later, I find myself living in this town. I love it, it's a great town. As I've gotten to know people, the council chief, I've been impressed, overwhelmed, and I appreciate this. It's with sadness that I parted with the Upper Room. I'm going to get all emotional here.[750.32][750.32](LAUGHING) It'll be worth it if I make her cry. But I'm on to bigger things. I am proud of what I've accomplished at the Upper Room. We've taken it to an organization that wasn't appreciated, we are nuisance and a problem, and I'm hoping that it's looking for solutions and a positive influence in what we do. I know we aren't everybody's favorite organization, but we do serve the broken, and they are human, and they deserve some dignity, and I'm glad I've been able to bring that to the Upper Room. As I leave, go into retirement, you haven't seen the last of me, I will be back. I plan on working with Housing Eldorado, and coming up with a solution for the homeless shelters, homeless camps. It's a problem, it's an issue, but it needs to be addressed, and I'll now have time to focus on that. So thank you so much.[810.00][810.00](APPLAUSE). Charlie, you sound like another person who has a problem with retirement.[819.32][819.32](LAUGHING) If there's any brief comments anybody would like to make at this time.
Good evening, I'm Peg Vanderkar, and I'm here from Housing Eldorado. I'm the secretary of this new nonprofit, and I just briefly want to say that Charlie has been a role model in both his understanding of the folks that we serve, the ones who are helpless in terms of finding enough housing, often helpless in finding mental health services, and health services, and everything else that most of us take for granted, that we can unwind the crazy bureaucracy and find solutions for ourselves, and these folks can't. So Charlie's been an inspiration, he's taken Upper Room in creative, adventurous, new directions, that has helped, have helped so many people, and we're grateful. God works in strange ways, I have to say, that him being handed retirement means that he is free, for us, to all of us, to offer other ways for him to serve, that he would not have been able to serve in if he was still at Upper Room. So God has strange ways, and I appreciate it. I appreciate Charlie. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg.[907.12][907.12](APPLAUSE).
I'd like to offer a few comments, too. As the district supervisor and as a former council member, Charlie, I have always appreciated Charlie's ability to hold difficult conversations and conflicting opinions, and find that space of common ground. And Charlie has had the rare ability to do that, and his ability has helped us do that as well. And I've appreciated, I've always trusted his heart, his knowledge, and his perspective, which has helped informed our decisions at other levels, too. So I look forward to seeing where his gifts and his love for our community will lead him, and Charlie, I have just enormous gratitude and respect for your position in our community, and I know your gifts are needed, and look forward to seeing how they're going to be employed, so appreciate it.[970.12][970.12](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, my name is Maria Brueger. I'm a retired educator here in Eldorado County, and I've been serving at Upper Room every Monday for the last 40 years. I have had the pleasure and the honor of watching us turn and change from being a place where we fed people, and we are no longer just a meal, and that's because of Charlie. It's been a pleasure to work with him. I think Charlie has learned to eye-roll professionally, (LAUGHING) working with me over the last however many years. But Charlie, I want to tell you, I appreciate you, I love you, I respect you for what you've done for us, with us, and for the community, and anytime you need help, you have my number. Thank you, Charlie. You've been wonderful. Thank you.[1039.04][1039.04](APPLAUSE).
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close this comment period, and bring it back to the council for any comments that you would like to make.
I'd like to make a comment. You know, when I started on the council in 2018, there was different leadership at the police department, there were different council members up here, there had been different leadership at Upper Room, and it was clear that, you know, and there was clearly a history that I was not fully privy to, but it was clear that there was definitely tension in the community around the Upper Room. And, you know, over the years that I've been in this position, and you've been executive director there, it seems like you have done such a great deal to settle that down, with your willingness to have these conversations with us, and, you know, your empathy and understanding for the people that you are serving at the Upper Room, but also your understanding of what the broader community needs, and, you know, the different hats that we all wear when we come to trying to find solutions, and, I mean, that's really a rare gift, and it really makes finding solutions possible. So I've appreciated working with you in different capacities and getting to know you. I think that you've brought so much to the issues that we face as a community, and I look forward to seeing what more you do. We need your expertise, we need your understanding as we move forward, and I hope that the Upper Room continues to be part of the solution that you've really made it over the years that you've been there. So thank you, so much.
Thank you, Karen.[1155.65][1155.65](APPLAUSE).
Can I actually add one more thing?
Sure.
One more thing. I just want to say that it is really nice to see a room full of people here to celebrate other community members. You know, for those of you that are here tonight, maybe you haven't been to a lot of meetings lately, a lot of meetings were over Zoom over the last couple of years, and we haven't had a meeting like this in a really long time. And it's just, it's really nice to see everybody here tonight, to, you know, highlight the achievements and accomplishments of people in our community. So thanks.
So just real quick, I just also want to add my thanks to Charlie, and I've been attending the Housing Eldorado meetings the last couple of times, and I'm looking forward to working with them on there, and I just think it's so great, the expertise, or I guess you could call it expertise, but what he's been involved in, and to bring that, it really pays off when you have people that have been through it, and, you know, tried to find solutions, and I think he has found a lot of solutions, and I'm looking forward to working with you more. So thank you again, Charlie.
Thank you, Patty. All right, with that, we're going to bring it back to our agenda. Thank you very much, Charlie, and wish you well in your retirement, and whatever you want to call it.[1241.83][1241.83](LAUGHING) All right. Yes. All right, with that, we're going to move on to item number four on the agenda, closed session report, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Ibrahimee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council, the Council does need a closed session today, conference with labor negotiators regarding the PPO, and provided direction to staff.
All right, thank you very much. And moving on to adoption of agenda, if there's no changes, if we can get a motion to adopt the...
I'll move to it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Moving on to announcements and presentations to the public, we're going to start off with brief comments by city council members. And we'll start with Councilmember Noe, Councilmember Brelly.
Well, as I just stated, I have attended the last couple of meetings with Housing Eldorado, and we have representatives here tonight that I'm sure they're going to discuss some of the things. I really think that they're taking a positive view, and I'm, there are a lot of enthusiasm, and I'm looking forward to see the progress that's being made. And real quick, if I can, I want to remind everybody about what we're calling Buried History Tour they're going to have of the cemetery, those folks that are advocating for raising funds to improve the cemetery over on Union Street. They're going to have actors come and portray the folks, some of our long-time history, the folks from this community that have made this community, and it's going to be a great day. It's Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00, and everyone's welcome. It's $10 for adults, and kids 10 and under are free, and they've really, you know, done a lot to work towards making this day successful, so I hope as many of you that can will turn out, and really support this cause, because you talk about history, that it's in that cemetery, and it's interesting to have them open this up and tell people what lies there, okay? Fun.[1391.15][1391.15](LAUGHING).
It would have been great if it was 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM in the cemetery.
I know.[1398.15][1398.15](LAUGHING) Unfortunately, we don't have lighting up there yet, but that's to come.
All right, Karen.
I don't have much to comment on. I enjoyed Oktoberfest and going downtown and seeing the community out, and I want to congratulate Rebecca Neese and the Engineering Department on their project award, but I know that you're going to talk more on that, so I'll leave it at that, and, yeah, that's all my comments for right now.
Doggone you. That's it for me. All right, thank you. So I do want to recognize Rebecca for, ooh, hmm, a little spotlight action here. Western Placerville Interchange Phase II won a Project of the Year Award from Construction Management Association of America, which is her peers. And that is one of the highest honors, is to be recognized by your peers for a project. And it's, this is, I got to read this because it's in geek language, which Rebecca is familiar with, I'm not. A Project of the Year Award is one from the American Public Works Association, CMAA, they love their acronyms, by the way. APWA are both national organizations that give annual awards for projects that exceed industry standards for development, budget management, time of delivery, and most importantly, enhancement to the community the project serves. Our Phase II was such a unique project with a delivery, not only a new off-ramp, but significant active transportation improvements with a new trail connection, class-two bike lanes, and transit facility. It was also delivered ahead of schedule and under budget. And what a great recognition for you to have, here in this little Placerville, in our little town that we love so much, and just like John Driscoll, you have expressed a lot of it, you love it just as much, and it shows them what you do. So thank you very much, and congratulations for that award.[1528.25][1528.25](APPLAUSE). All right. So I had, that was one of my things. The other thing I had to talk about was, and Cleve might have mentioned this, did you talk last meeting that we met with Mark Egbert?
A little bit, yeah.
Oh, great. Somebody stole one of my other things. All right. No, actually, well, I wasn't here last meeting, by the way. Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor, for filling in for me, I really appreciate that, because I was fishing and enjoying.
Yeah, you just owe me some salmon.
Yes, I do. I owe people a lot of salmon here, thank you. The, so Mark Egbert, what does he, I'm going to slaughter this, what does he do?
He's the district...
Our...
No, you caught me.
All right. So we talked about vegetation management, and I feel really bad, because he has such a passion for vegetation management, he has such a skill for acquiring funding, and the programs that he works with, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, which is one of the funding mechanisms for a lot of the projects he does, was, well, that's just who he works with, and that provides the funding for a lot of the projects that he's working on. One of the ones is a veg management in the whole Texas, Texas Hill area, on the other side of the airport, almost over to Paydirt Road. And it's one of those things to protect any fires coming up out of the Weber Creek Canyon. And he's looking at, and he has maps that go all over the, around the city, and ideas of how to protect it. And so really appreciated our opportunity to speak with him, and to talk about that, and we have a lot of interesting things coming that, really, we have nothing solid right now, so I'm not even going to speak to it, but it's, there's a lot of great momentum with him, and I look forward to more meetings.
I'm going to mention real quick, too, he's a local boy.
Yes.
And he really, he just, the love of Eldorado County has just always been with him, and he's based out of Georgetown, and does a lot, and he's been working really hard for many, many years on all of this, these projects, and he, I think I told you, he volunteered to help our fire safe committee, and then Cleve got in touch with him, and Dennis, and they met, and so a lot of good prospects.
Yes, it is.
Mark is the district manager of the Georgetown Eldorado Resource Conservation District.
Thank you. I knew you'd find it. All right, thank you, and that's it for my comments, and we're going to move on to item 6.2. Now, this here is like the same award that Rebecca received, but in the financial area, and this is Dave's award for, and a recognition for how well he keeps our books, and how well we manage the city. And, you know, accountants really don't get recognized unless the money's missing.[1729.12][1729.12](LAUGHING) And fortunately, we don't get that kind of recognition here, you know, because we have a lot of great people working here, and once again, this is an acknowledgement of our city, and how well the finances, the financials are managed within that. So with that, I express my appreciation, because these things can go sideways, too, and this one didn't. And as far as I know, we haven't had one that's gone sideways, and it's just a recognition of your good work. So thank you for that, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. That's very gracious of you, I really appreciate it. And under normal circumstances, we would be bringing this report to you in March or April of this year, but due to indirect workload impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic, it took us longer, and I apologize for that, but good news. And tonight, we do have Vanessa Burke, CPA and partner of the Poon Group, that will present the report tonight. With that, I'll hand it over to Vanessa.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to wear bifocals this year. I think two years ago, I presented here and I wasn't wearing bifocals. But this year, I'm wearing bifocals. So I'm going to have, I'm going to have to switch between my glasses. I presented here at City of Placerville, I think it was three years ago, and you had a great presentation that day of, there were wild animals in the room and it was really crazy to follow that. And then last year, it was COVID and I only saw you all electronically, which was awkward, I think. And this is actually my first presentation of audit results in front of a city council since the COVID pandemic hit. And as a survivor of COVID, I think that's great. So I'm really grateful to be here in front of you tonight and to be able to present the results. So I think, Dave, there's timing on the slides, which is making it go forward without me. I see, or is it me? I'm hitting the button, possibly. So I won't be able to see that far, but I can, I have my notes in front of me here. So quickly, I've got a prepared presentation that I, I will run through. We have been the auditors for City of Placerville for a number of years and worked with Dave as well as with John. John's probably grateful he'll never have to respond to another audit confirmation again where we send a request for legal information to him. So I wish him well in his new endeavors through retirement and am very jealous that he gets to retire. But anyway, I will go through this quickly and take questions at the end. Really, my, my presentation's going to be centered on kind of what our, just a reminder of what the audit is, what our scope of work is. And Dave talked about timing. We annually have a certain required communications to you as those charge with governance. I will go through those. We'll talk about the audit results. I'll do a brief overview of the financial statements. We'll talk about key financial indicators, including pension and OPEB information. And then at the end, it's just my contact information and we will open it up for questions. So, for scope of work and timing, and this thing's going to make my timing go fast, I think, but we really focus on three main areas for the audit. In your agenda packet, you have the first two, the annual financial report and the single audit for federal expenditures under the uniform guidance. But we also do a third report, which is an agreed upon procedures report over your GAN limit. And that is actually filed and maintained here. So we really cover kind of those three areas. Our focus tonight is going to be on the first two, the financial statement audit and the compliance audit over federal awards. You will kick into the federal expenditures audit requirements when you exceed 750,000 in spending for federal awards. And that's why you're subject to that annual audit requirement. So that is really the, the extent of our scope of work. It takes many months to do it. Timing wise is generally about six months to complete an audit and your year end is June 30. This is 2020, which is what we're going to present the results on. And really, if you think about it, that's right after the pandemic hit. We didn't even get compliance requirements for the federal funding for the first round of stimulus payments. They did not come out until December of 2020. So we had to go back and redo a lot of our public agency audits on the single audit piece because that requirement came out late. But again, they were just in the mode of, of responding to that. So I'll, next, I'll go through the annual required communications. So really, for the required communications is really to differentiate between management's responsibilities as well as the auditor's responsibilities. Technically, management is really responsible for all 100 and plus pages of the report as well as those charged with governance. And we really are, are responsible for auditing that information that is within that document. We are required to present, you're required to present the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles, generally accepted, and I think the timing's going on that, in accordance with the US, United States of America. Your standard setting body is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. You are required to adopt sound accounting policies and principles, establish and maintain internal controls here in the organization, which is a lot of what Dave does in his day to day, and then ensure the fair presentation of the financials, whether from error, material error, whether that's due to fraud or just a mistake that might have happened. And then last and foremost is to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibility is to perform the audits in accordance with our standards, which are auditing standards generally accepted in the US and those that are applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by federal comptroller general of the United States. That's called a yellow book. In lay terms, we all refer to it as a yellow book. And so because you're a government agency and you're a recipient of federal awards, you're subject to those yellow book standards. The second is that we are responsible for communicating to those charged with governance and that would include you, the city council, as well as with management. We assess audit risk of internal controls over financial reporting. We determine whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented and we render our opinion on the basic financials. And then last, if there were any internal control weaknesses or recommendation that would rise to a level of a significant deficiency in internal control or a material weakness, we would report those to you. And I'm pleased to present that we will not have any to report tonight. So, we talked about scope and timing. The other aspects of the audit we're required to communicate are considering any significant estimates, just so you have an understanding of those areas within the financials that are hot, subject to a high level of estimation in their process. And that could include items that have significant underlying assumptions. So those areas we've carved out in your report consider fair value of investments. Depreciation, we have to pick useful lives and the method of depreciating those. Those are all estimations within your audited financial statements. And then the last is net pension and OPEB obligations. It's always been a talk as to changes in OPEB assumptions and pension assumptions. Those assumptions are all incorporated as part of your financial statements. The other is, we need to point out to you as part of our required communication, if you were to look at the report and read it in the footnotes, what we consider to be significant, those that have a significant impact on the city's financial report. In note one, we disclose to you all the significant accounting policies that have been adopted by management as well as city council. This year, there was one new one, which you'll know, is GASB statement number 95. And that actually postponed the effective date of certain authoritative guidance. So, we had standards that were required to be implemented and the, the Government Accounting Standards Board, in response to the pandemic, came out with GASB statement number five and gave reprieve to government agencies to say, we know you're dealing with responding to the pandemic. We're going to allow you to defer the effective date on certain standards such as leases. That's one of the major ones that was deferred. And so we've taken advantage here, you've taken advantage here at the city to defer the effective data of those standards and that is not unusual in the industry. We see that across the board. So we'll be delayed on that and we will be working on implementing that in the future years. The next is your pension and OPEB footnotes, your contingency footnote, your note 13 on your P, PPFA limited obligation and revenue bond. You've had that disclosure in there for a number of years. And then I think the newest footnotes are footnote 14 and footnote 15. Footnote 14 talks about uncertainty due to the COVID-19 pandemic. You'll see that this report is a portion of the year, but you'll see that you fared fairly well in terms of the pandemic. And then the last footnote is subsequent events, is that you've received coronavirus relief funds and ARPA funds, combined total is 2.8 million. And ARPA's coming in two tranches, so that would only include the first tranche being received in the next fiscal year. So you should be a recipient of a second tranche to that funding under ARPA. Next is our normal annual required communications. These are required to be disclosed if we had any disagreements with management or internal control weaknesses or significant deficiencies, any accounting issues where we might have had to consult or any irregularities or fraud, we would be required to report those to you. And we're proud to present, as well as Dave, that there are none this year. And we hope there never will be. Audit results. So really, the audit results, this is the award we talk about. We go through a very lengthy process. I can't even tell you how many, number of documents Dave and his team, and this year was an unusual year because we went to working remote. And so I really want to extend our appreciation to Dave and his team because that required us to keep everybody safe and healthy. It required his team an extra lift and extra effort to scan documents in and upload them to our portal so that we would be able to get access to it without coming into contact with your employees and having to be on site. So, we, we really want to thank Dave and his team for that. The financial statements, I'm here to say that the audit results are that they are fairly presented in all material respects. We've issued what we call an unmodified opinion, meaning it doesn't get any better than that. It's the highest level you can get. We don't consider them levels, but we didn't modify that opinion for any reason. And what does that mean? It just means that we did look at your accounting policies. They've been consistently applied. The estimates that we talked about just a little bit ago are reasonable and we've looked at the underlying assumptions. Disclosures are proper and the city did comply in all material respects with the compliance requirements over your federal funding. GAN limit, that's not in your packet, but there were no exceptions to the agreed upon procedures. And that's really just a test to ensure that your appropriation and spending is within the limits under GAN. Overview of the financials. So, the financial statements really consist of several parts within the financial section. Some of it is audited, some of it is unaudited information and some of it is in relation to, and I won't go through this because you've all had the report for some period of time. And so I will just say that if you were to read anything, the third bullet there is the management's discussion and analysis. It's required supplementary information. Although it's unaudited, it gives comparative information of the city's financial position this year versus last year. And it gives a narrative analysis of that in lay term, which will help you to understand the financials better. I'll briefly go through an overview of the financial statements. So when we take a look at each of the financials, there are several different sections. The first is the government-wide financial statements. And this shows the city overall as a whole, on a full accrual basis. And this includes your governmental activities as well as your business type activities for a grand total. Your assets this year were 141.5 million and that increased over prior year of 100, sorry about that, 136.3 million. Your deferred outflow and inflow, those account names sound interesting, but those are mainly related to your pension and your OPEB obligations. So in the accounting terms, there are certain items that are deferred for recognition under the pension and OPEB standards. Your liabilities are 78.2 million and that stayed flat from last year. So your liabilities have not increased. And if you look down at the bottom, you can see your total net position is 65.9 million at the bottom. And that is up 4.72 million overall as compared to the prior year. When you look at the governmental activities, it increased 2.89 million and the business type activities increased 1.83 million for an overall increase in ending net position. When you look at the subcategories of net position, you'll see net investment and capital assets, it's 68.4 million. Last year was 62.8 million. So this was a year in which there was some heavy capital improvement projects happening. And so that increased overall about 6.34 million over the prior year. Your restricted net position on a government wide is really those assets that are restricted for specific purposes related to grants, any kind of special measures that you might have. And that stayed relatively flat. Your unrestricted net position is really your kind of remaining balance that went, that increased or you have a greater deficit this year of about a million. And that's really primarily negative due to the long-term obligations for pension and OPEB that drive that. So those long-term obligations are funded over time. Next is the statement of activities, summary statement for the government wide. This is again full accrual. The difference between this statement and the statement of net position is the statement of net position is as of June 30, 2020. This shows one year of transactions from July 1 through June 30, 2020. And it shows your activities in those funds combined between governmental and business type activities and the grand total. You can see that your total expenses are 20, and my, my glasses, I can't read, 20, 26.9 million. Let me go back. Okay, you got it, Dave. 26.9 million. Your program revenues are 18.7 million. So your net cost of services are 8.2 million. And then supporting under that are your general taxes and other revenue is 11.9 million. Interest, investment earnings and miscellaneous revenue, total 12.8 million, resulting in a total change in net position of 4.7 million. You can see that your governmental activities were positive at 2.9 million and your business type activities was positive at 1.8 million. Next is, we present a summary balance sheet for your general fund. This is your remaining fund after all other restricted sewer waste, water, all the rest. The total assets for the general fund were 2.7 million. Liabilities was 783,000. And that leaves a remaining fund balance of 1.9 million. Last year, it was 1.915. So it's only changed slightly, which you'll see on the next slide. Your non-spendable amount is 697,000. Your unassigned fund balance was 1.2 million. And I'll talk about that on a later slide. Again, that's at a point in time, at the end of June 30. The next slide shows all your transactions in the general fund and a statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. You see total revenue of 9.1 million, total expenditures of 8.8 million, net transfers out of 246,000 for a net change of fund balance of 22,000. So you're technically breaking even in your general fund, which is what we like to see.
Vanessa, if I may?
Yeah.
Real quick. The city earned a little over $51,000 in coronavirus virus relief fund. And if it wasn't for that, we would actually have about a $28,000 deficit. So that kind of helped us through that process during that time.
Yeah. And there were some kind of squeaky rules on the recognition of the Corona, they, I shouldn't say squeaky, but they came out with guidance in December on how to recognize revenue for the coronavirus relief fund. So, we as practitioners were waiting to see what the guidance was that was going to come out from GASB and the AICPA to help us with how to recognize that because a lot of costs were incurred prior to 2020, the end of 2020. But the coronavirus relief funds could have been applied for and been received after year end, but cover those pre-costs. So, there was a lot of technical guidance that came out and review of that. The numbers get bigger though, as we move forward with more stimulus packages being passed. The next is your single audit report. That's the skinnier report that is in your agenda. That is your audit of your federal award programs. There are two audit opinions or auditors' reports in there. The first is the internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. I mentioned as reporting to you annually, if we had found material weaknesses in internal controls, we would have reported them as part of that report. And we have none to report tonight. The second report is compliance for each major program and internal controls over compliance for those major programs. We look at that for the federal program that you see identified there, which is your highway planning and construction grant. We do sampling on this, but you can see that your total federal expenditures are 3.5 million and we audited 3.3 million of that total in our sampling. So our coverage ratio is about 92.89%. In the Schedule of Findings in Question Costs, you can see however, though, that the city qualifies at a low-risk auditee. Under that technical guidance, you're, we're only required to audit essentially a much smaller portion of your federal expenditures. But we do get substantial coverage by picking your largest program there. And we do a risk assessment each year where we determine which one we're going to audit. So that's the one that came up this year. Next, key financial indicators and pension. I mentioned earlier on your governmental activities, your net cost of services to tax revenue, we always like to take a look at this. If we consider your governmental activities as really the non-user charge fund where you're relying on tax dollars- you're relying on tax dollars and other charges and grants in order to support your services, we like to take a look at how much you're spending against those two criteria. So when we look at the expenses and we back out your programmatic revenue, which are charges for services and government operating grants and capital grants, that leaves a net cost of services of 8.5 million that you need to cover with tax dollars, tax or other investment earnings, et cetera. Currently, you're at 8.5 million. Your tax revenue is 10.9 million, so you're really sitting at about 1.3 times those net costs of services. So you're at a very reasonable ratio in covering your costs. I see some governments, as you might know, I work in a lot of distressed governments, and sometimes that ratio can be a much different picture. The next slide is looking at your general fund reserves. We talked about the unassigned fund balance, and the general fund is 1.2 million on the prior slide. We take a look at that as compared to your annual expenditures to see how much reserves you actually have sitting there available for contingencies. So you're sitting at about 14%. It's down a little from prior year, but again, it was ARPA year. It was a difficult year. You had shuttered businesses. I mean, there's a whole host of reasons, and that isn't unusual to see it decline. GFOA recommends two months of reserves. You're slightly under that at about 14%. GFOA says 16.67, but that's a rough figure. Obviously, as you're getting more funding, that can go back up through that process of receiving ARPA. Next two slides, I'm going to talk about pension and OPEB information, and this slide is really to show where you're sitting with your total liabilities as compared to what a rate change could do to that. So currently, your net pension liability is being booked at that total amount over on the far rate hand side, 19.6 million. You're funded in your miscellaneous plan at 64.36% and your safety plan at 68.86%. Go back, sorry. There's an auto turn thing on here. So when we look at what a 1% rate change would do, discount rates are set by CalPERS. We can't, we can't change those. We're subject to their actuarial determination, but if they were to make a rate change, which they have in the past, you know, five years, they've made rate changes on their discount rate, it will change how much the liability is that's recorded on your books. So if they were to drop the interest rate by 1%, the liability would go up to 27.4. If they were to increase the discount rate, meaning you're earning more, it would go down to 13.1 million. And that holds true on the OPEB. Same scenario, different discount rate. Right now, you're currently booking your total OPEB liability on the books as shown at 3.8 million. I didn't show the breakout between government and enterprise. And again, that's the same with the healthcare trend rate. And I added the healthcare trend rate in here because that's, as healthcare costs go up, that trend rate changes. But looking at the sensitivity of that to a change, you're discounting currently at 2.45, and the OPEB liability with the 1% change would go from 3.9 million to 4.2 if it went down. If it went up, it would go from 3.9 to 3.6. And looking at the trend rates, it would go from 3.9, it would go to 4.9 using a trend rate of 5.9% escalator. At 4.9, it would go to 3.5, and at 6.9, it would go to 4.3 million. Again, those are all estimates. We talked about significant estimates, so those are the kinds of sways that can happen in the liabilities. But we do look at that. The city does receive actuary reports, and we audit that as part of our audit and make sure everything ties in to what the actuaries are recommending. I would be remiss not to recognize Andrew Roth. He's not here today. He actually has COVID and is fighting, but he's almost over it. So it's been running, so many people have gotten it this year. It's crazy. But he would be here if he could be here. But he's been working on your audit for a number of years and is our director in charge of it and is really instrumental to the audit, and I wouldn't be here able to present this to you today without him and his team. So I just want to thank you. I want to thank Dave and his team. 2020 was a rough year. It's looking back in time. I'm ready to move to, we're going to be out here for 2021 pretty soon, and we'll be in front of you sooner next year. So with that, I just want to say thank you and open it up for any questions on the report.
Thank you very much. And what a, it's nice to hear a good report like that. I guess the best report you can have is, everything is just fine, right?
No news is good news.
Yes, exactly. Any questions from the council?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to say, you know, thank you, Dave, for doing such a good job in our financial department and being so conservative with the accounting and the management of our funds, doing such a great job. And thank you for your very thorough report.
I was thinking, as you were reading all those numbers, oh my God, I'm glad I don't have to do all that. I really commend you for all of you folks in that field. It's just, it's mind-boggling. You're reading about the pension thing, and this is something that we're, you know, everybody's really thinking about. Where do you see it going?
Well, that's more of an actuarial question. There is a, there is a chart. You've been increasing your contributions. If you were to look at the MDNA, Dave put in a nice kind of history of your funding patterns. And where I have seen some organizations are not funding their pension, you're at 68 point, you know, around 68%. And that's a good place to be. We're not, I do some work in Arizona. I'm the partner in charge of all of Arizona, and Arizona is sorely, sorely underfunded. I think they're sitting at around, I don't know, 45 to 50% in their public safety, much lower than here, and their discount rates are even much higher. So they just haven't really recognized the impacts of it. I'm working on a distressed county in Arizona right now and helping them kind of recover. And, you know, I think they're happy that everybody's coming in and driving up their property increases, but they don't have the same model that we have here for property taxes. They get a state endless share and some other things that are much more difficult to kind of manage. But, you know, I think the costs are going to continue to go up. You know, CalPERS responded, you know, with the early outcry to increase, you know, start getting people into PEPRA, which would allow your new hires in law enforcement, public safety, and miscellaneous to be paying it at a higher rate than you as an employer. As our workforces turn over and public safety and we're hiring younger and more junior people, we're going to see that filter through, but we don't see the weighting happening from that yet. So we're still seeing rising costs of pension and rising contribution rates. I think it will start to taper off eventually, you know, depending upon what hap, I don't think anybody planned for the pandemic. People were setting aside reserves to fund the pensions, and then the pandemic hit. But we just got out of a recession, so I think we're going to just have to get used to, you know, every five to seven years, something significant's going to happen in government that's going to require us. And that's why that reserve level that you have, that 14% is very important to maintain because you can get sideways and go through that very quickly. So being conservative, and you've got two extra measures here, Measure H, Measure L, those sales tax measures are very important as well.
You may recall that this year's budget for '21, '22, we included 1% of salary for all funds except for the general fund. We couldn't afford it in the general fund, but all the other funds to pre-fund that money for the, you know, paid on our unfunded liability. So that's something we're doing as well to get ahead on our unfunded pension liability.
Thank you.
All right. Vanessa, thank you so much for making the trip up here and doing it in person. It's a treat to be doing this, and we sure appreciate your great report.
I live down the hill. I'm only in Folsom.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not that far.
You're not in Walnut Creek?
No.
Huh? You don't live in Walnut Creek?
No, no. Our office is in Walnut Creek, but we're all now remote. We've had a change in our industry as well that I don't think we will ever go back to, which we'll see what happens with the economy. You know, a lot of businesses are not going back to brick and mortar, so I think we are one of those businesses that we were able to respond really quick because when you really think about being a CPA and auditing, we're really here at your site. We're never in our office anyway. So for the pandemic to hit, we were able to respond very quickly because we already were automated and paperless. It was our clients that typically struggled to get, you know, we have massive capital projects files, and they're hard copy, and if they're not scanned, I mean, there was that whole push for that to happen, and even HR files, the HR files, nobody wanted to release those and scan that, you know, public, you know, have it on the internet, which is unusual. So I think we may not go back to that. We have a brick and mortar in Orange County, but we're not going to require our employees to come in and do some of the things that the other businesses are being mandated to do.
Interesting.
Yeah. It's a nice, it's a good change. I think our employees are enjoying it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And we're going to go ahead and open it up for a public comment at this time. Anybody wishing to comment on our annual fiscal report? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any further comments before we move on? All right, again, thank you very much, Vanessa. Really appreciate your time, and congratulations, Dave, on another year of basically a good report card, I guess.
Thank you. And I have to thank your finance staff because they, without them, this wouldn't be possible. So a lot of hard work.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Dave, do you want a motion to acknowledge and file on that?
Yes, please.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to acknowledge and receipt of this report?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to, just one second there. All right, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion vote and roll call. Unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion, the reading of the full text of the resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So with that, is there any discussion on this item or willing to pull any items?
I don't need to pull an item, but I would like to make a brief comment on 7.6, if I may. So 7.6 is acknowledging and filing the Measure J Fund Financial Report. And for those watching at home or in the audience, Measure J is a voter-approved measure. It's a quarter on every dollar of sales tax, and it funds our police officers. Primarily, it elevates their salaries to a more competitive level. And I want to pull this because I see this report every year, actually every quarter, right? I've seen this report many times since I've been on the council, and every time the funds come short of what is needed, Measure J provides about 70% of the funds needed. And I'm not saying we should do anything right now, but I just, I want to highlight this for the community because at some point, we really need to look at what we can do to make it a more sustainable situation. You know, it's not sustainable to keep taking from the general fund to supplement the police department, and it's not sustainable to become less and less competitive with other jurisdictions and what we pay our police officers. So I just, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the community.
All right, any further comments on any items?
I just want, I want to make sure, Cara, this doesn't fund the entire police department. This is added on. And I remember when the campaign was, when we, this was passed that the community, and at the time, it was, it really provided enough money 100%. We didn't have to, you know, but as it, you know, as inflation goes, as we go on, it has dropped immensely, and you're right. So something to think about.
All right. All right, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment at this time. Anybody wishing to address any items on the consent calendar? Now would be the time to approach the podium. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time and bring it back to the council for a motion and a vote.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second?
All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. So moving on to item eight, that would be public comment on non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under special circumstances. I reserve the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which is slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. So with that, we'll go ahead and check with our city manager on any written comments, communications.
No new written communications.
All right, thank you very much, Cleve. And on to item 8.2, oral communications. At this time, we'll open up the mic for anybody wishing to address the council on any non-agendized
A lot of attention has been focused on the hostess shelter plan. The initial response was very positive. The first step was to be a focus group among the homeless, which was very exciting, but the focus group never happened. Instead, the details of the plan.
Jane, can you approach the mic a little closer, move it so that we can hear you better?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so speaking for the homeless and the hostess plan, the initial focus group among the homeless actually never happened, but the details of the plan were circulated throughout the homeless community, and the opinion that the homeless advocates heard more than any other was negative. And that was based on the idea of fencing in next to the jail, the overall impression that people were getting. And let's remember that they are the victims of trauma, many of them have PTSD, but the overall impression was not one of protection being offered but of semi-incarceration. So that was a stumbling block. As the advocates studied the details of the original hostess plan, some concerns arose that this proposal could have an adverse effect on federal funding for other projects. The county and the city were notified, and the county has begun to research this. We have not yet heard anything back. At this point, one of the supervisors, who I promised shall remain nameless, commented in great frustration that finally a plan seemed to be workable, finally it felt like the county and the city seemed to be on board, and now the homeless advocates didn't like it. And of course, that's frustrating. In September, the homeless advocate community heard that the sheriff had withdrawn his proposal, basically saying, well, I tried, and that it was over with. It turns out that that is not the case, but it is widely believed among the homeless community that that is the case. I just spoke to PEG outside. Housing Eldorado was under the impression that that was the case until 10 minutes ago. So in response to that, they began meeting, and Patty and Cara, thank you so much for turning up at that first meeting. That was huge. But I'm not saying for the county or the city, I'm saying for all of us, including especially the advocate community, this whole thing has been a trail of bad planning, bad follow-through, bad communication, and then the horrendous bad luck of the Caldera fire. So Housing Eldorado has responded in the last two weeks with a coalition of nonprofits and volunteers. They've gone to work, they've identified assets, they're organizing their efforts. They believe, following last night's meeting, that they can put together a nomadic shelter for this winter. They're working on it. It's not completely a closed chain yet, but it's very close. They have the experience to raise funds and to open a shelter and to maintain it and to service it. But information on the status of hostess is not coming to them, and so there's confusion about who's doing what. I know that there's another I know that there's another meeting scheduled on October 23rd and hopefully that will resolve some of the issues, but we need to communicate with each other more. Please. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Jane. Anybody else wishing to address public comment? Good evening, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and congratulations on the great audit. In so many areas, the city would pass an audit. It's an excellent city. It's a great little town, beautiful. But my heart is broken that our hundreds of homeless are going into the winter. And now, think about your dog being out last night or your cat. You love your dog and you might let it stay out last night in 55 degrees, but it's going to drop down below 50 to 45 to 40 to 32. And you have an ordinance that the police will enforce, that you cannot leave household pets out in severe winter weather. We've got to do something this winter. I'm ashamed that I have to come to you with my limited thinking and disorganized speaking to plead for 500 other human beings that the police can't even bring to town hall and shut off the respectable part of it to at least have bathrooms, that, that as a town where the gold rush started and a million people came here for the gold, but we've got affluenza, I could read the parable of the rich fool who said, my barns aren't big enough, I'll build a larger barn. But God said to him, you fool, this night your soul will be required of you. Who's then will all these things that you've accumulated? And we're all so blessed. I had more than I could eat for lunch. So did you. You had to hold yourself back. With one minute left to speak, I'm pleading, I'm pleading for your humanity. There is a meeting again next week at Federated at 7 o'clock. Cara and Patty came and wasted their time to listen to these fools wanting to bring the homeless in out of, out of the rain, out of the sleet, out of the snow, out of living like animals, out of having no restroom and 30 or 40 of them living up on Upper Broadway. And you say there's no room for a potty, porta potty. There's plenty of room to bulldoze for a porta potty there on Upper Broadway. Inhumane, the United Nations would say that is not just cruel and unusual punishment. They would say it's inhumane treatment of other human beings. And I'm pleading for you to provide a shelter this winter. We have a city who wants a shelter but no money. We have a county who has the money but doesn't want a shelter. Let's make something work. Let's make something work this winter. You can do it. Here is a, I'm not even going to hand this out tonight, but it's from one of the homeless and they called the hostess, the hostess camp, the hostage camp. That's in their mentality. I know the time is done. You've listened. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Let's do something this winter.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council here. Any comments, anything? All right. All right, moving on, items pulled from consent calendar, there were none. Item 10, ordinances, none, public hearings, none. On to item 12.1, adopt a resolution recommending the option for redistricting for Eldorado County. This is very interesting because it's, it's an evolving issue and as we, as we address this tonight, it may even evolve beyond what we're doing here because in the last, what, 24 hours maybe?
Little more than that.
Little more than that has, it has even evolved more. So we'll have more to talk about here. I'll turn this over to Cleve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I can't, looked at this and debated whether or not this was something we wanted to look at as a council, but I, I think as, as I looked at the different maps and the proposals that are there, I thought at least we should look at it and determine whether or not this is something we want to weigh in. I did talk to my counterpart with the county, Don Ashton, and presented that to him, you know, what his thoughts are on us presenting our opinion on it. He thought that was very appropriate for, for us to do that. I prepared, as you see in here, a resolution. Whether or not we do that tonight, it may be premature at this time. There may be something else you want to do and maybe it's less than that in terms of a letter or having me communicate with them and present our, what, what our opinions are on it. But what I wanted to do, if I can quickly tonight, is just kind of go through what, what I presented to you was four options, is now six options. There's been two new ones that have come out just in the last few days. I'm not sure exactly when they did, but I know there's actually six options now. The one thing that, that I wanted to present to you is that I feel, and this is just my opinion, that the way we have it now, we associate quite a bit with those communities that are outside our city limits that are, that have similarities to us. And I'm talking about Diamond Springs, Camino, and some of those that are currently in District 3. We have issues, as you know, related to Apple Hill and Camino and the, and the traffic issue. And we have potential issues with, towards Diamond Springs and Highway 49 and et cetera, the plans that have been talked about for years in terms of putting, realigning Highway 49 coming through Placerville and et cetera. So those are the things that I looked at and said, does it make sense that that should all be in one district? I don't know that it has to be, but by separating it into two districts with two different county commissioners or supervisors over that, potentially says that there's, there's two different views on how that should be done. And so those are the kind of issues that I think that we should be aware of. Whether or not we take a position on this, I want to leave that up to you as, as the council, but I thought it would be good to present that to you. So I'm, I'm just going to walk through quickly these proposals. This first one, I believe, is the one that is called the, the city proposals. And this is very close to what we currently have. If you notice down and down below Diamond Springs on that. Do you have the pointer, Dave? If you look at these maps, you see the, the dotted black outline, that is the current, that is the current supervisory, supervisory district. And the color is what they're proposing in each of these different proposals. So for example, what I was talking about, right here, you can see this portion of this property and right there, it would be taken out under this proposal, out of District 3 and put down in here into, below is District 2, right? I believe?
Or is it the other way around?
Well, yeah, yeah, you're right. Yes, this would be added to District 2. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. That is about the only thing on this and there is another small portion up here, the same thing that would come out of District 3 and go into District.
Or the other way around? Is the black and white, that's the existing boundary, right?
That's the existing, yeah.
And the color is the proposed?
Yeah, so currently. Right, yeah, right. Yes, I'm saying it backwards. Thank you. As you were saying. So yes, so this would come in, these areas, this area and this area would come into District 3 where now they're not. So just, and this will be consistent with all the maps. So Dave, do you want to go to the next one, please? Then just, any questions on those? As we go through this? This one is also fairly close, but you can see there's quite a large area down here that would come into District 3 that is not currently in District 3. I don't think there's a whole lot otherwise around these areas. A little bit of an area there, come into District 3. So that gives you an idea of where that would be. I think that's it. Any questions on that one or anything different? Go ahead, Dave. This one is what is known as the Community Region Map, and this is the first one that shows quite, quite a large difference. As you can see, Diamond Springs and most of Diamond Springs down here is now in, outside of District 3. So all of this area down here that was in District 3 prior would now not be part of District 3. And portioned, portioned up here. This doesn't show the whole map, but I believe this is the one, Dave, if you can scroll up, is that possible to, I believe this is the one that goes the other direction. See, this goes all the way to Georgetown and out to the North County, North County line. This is. No, that's, that's a different one.
Or Community Services District?
This one is known as the Community Region Map.
What?
Yeah.
So when they refer to Community Region, I mean.
I, I think what they're talking about, and maybe Pierre can help me with that, what Community Regions are. I believe like Diamond Springs is a Community Region. Is that correct, Pierre? Do you know how those are defined? Is there a definition of those?
I mean, when I think of Community Region for our community, that's not what comes to mind.
Yeah. Go ahead, Pierre.
Yeah, that's basically correct. When Eldorado County was developing its current general plan, it defined, it defined Community Regions, Rural Regions and, and Rural Centers. So those, so basically, think of the Rural Centers and think of the Community Regions as sort of an urban limit line. So that's where the county was directing your more intensive development potential, a higher density residential, the commercial, the industrial. That's what the Community Region means. And so when those lines were drawn, and I can speak with authority.
What's the region?
Because I drew those lines originally. So yeah, those lines are areas that basically captured the land use pattern that was more intensive rather than the Rural Regions where you'd see the larger parcels and the agricultural activities. But that's what it meant. And so you have the Placerville Community Region, which includes a lot of the higher density and intensity of development surrounding it, beyond the city's corporate limits.
But it's, in this map, the way they showed it, separate from Diamond Springs Community Region. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a Diamond Springs, Eldorado Community Region, which is separate from the Placerville Community Region.
Okay.
It's essentially separated by the Weber Creek.
However, in this case, we are combined with the entire North County, Coloma, Georgetown, et cetera, which, which makes it interesting. And I believe up on the east, a portion of Camino is also coming out of what is currently part of District 3.
Okay.
All right, Dave, go ahead and go to the next one. I'm trying to see the differences. This is, this is again similar. Is this, this looks like it may be.
This is the Hydall.
Oh, the, oh, yes, this is Supervisor Hydall presented this as a different, and I'm not sure exactly what the differences are. I didn't go through that in detail, but.
If you scroll on the, if you scroll west and you see Eldorado Hills, you'll see that he kind of flattened the line down there at the bottom and spread it out and then took District, what is that?
Is that 2?
District, District 4 and, and brought it down and took more of Cameron Park and those areas. And then really took Diamond Springs, Eldorado and Camino out of Placerville and pushed us north.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I think, you know, looking at that, it looks very, you know, it looks like a politician drew that one. Just saying.
I think you're right.
But you know, that's what, that's what they do and they're, they're going to have to work this through and we're going to have to figure out how we want to present it. I think it's important for the city of Placerville to, to recognize and acknowledge who our, who our partners are, neighbors are, and how we want to be, how we want to be represented here. And honestly, that, that to me, I think Diamond Springs and Eldorado and those areas, they, a lot of those people, Pleasant Valley, up in those areas, they, you know, when you ask them, what town do you live in? They say Placerville. And they don't, they don't say.
Well, they're so close.
They are, right. And even Camino.
Right.
Camino is, you know, I think it's important for us to have representation in Camino that, that also acknowledges and can help us facilitate conversations with them regarding a lot of the challenges we're going to have because it's going to be, it's going to be important to have those, as we move forward with Highway 50 and issues like that, to have a, have common ground and common goals and, and working together for solutions. And I think we can do that better with, with the representation that is equal that way.
So Dave, are there two more?
I don't see them on the county website.
I see them in Wendy's newsletter. There's the EDC Chamber Map Alternative, which is a new one.
But the one that Wendy sent out, it was just the 4, wasn't it?
Did she send something?
She sent one today.
If you went to the website, she would have said.
Yeah.
Really? Because I'm looking, I don't, I only see.
I got it yesterday.
Would you like me to forward you, Wendy?
Sure. Literally Wendy and I haven't seen each other for two weeks, so literally. So yesterday was our first day.
So this is the one that's known as the Community Service District, District Alternative. So I'm trying to see exactly how they've done that. Because you'd think that would be the Cameron Park. I guess it kind of is in here.
What's the green?
The green is District 2, right?
South County.
South County, that's all South County.
That'd be like George Trenbusk.
Okay.
So, so the Eldorado Hills Community Service District, I guess, kind of this area, Cameron Park Community Service District there. And then the others are, you know, city of Placerville and the rest of it's kind of there, but. Okay, so and then is there one more, Dave?
There's a community, yeah, the chambers.
Chambers. That's the Eldorado Hills Chamber.
This is the Eldorado Hills Chamber, yes, proposal.
So can anyone just submit a?
Anyone can submit, yeah.
You can, they have the program, you can go online and.
Why don't we throw our own?
I know, that would be cool. I think we should throw our own. Can we? Is it too late? Is it too late?
No, I don't think it is too late. It is not.
I'm serious.
Yeah.
I understand you have to balance the population.
Yeah.
Exactly, but we could do that.
Yeah, and it has to have a, you could, 10%, you can, you can't exceed 10%.
Maximum 10%, yeah. So anyway, this is the one that Chambers, and I'm not sure why Eldorado's Chamber, what, maybe something they saw that they.
It was interesting that the chambers split Eldorado Hills that way.
That is interesting.
It does, yeah.
That is interesting. I, I actually like that. I mean, that's fairly similar to what we have currently. I like that outline.
And you know, maybe what you want to do, could consider doing is just send to them, rather than actually, we prefer this alternative, some guidelines. So we feel, we associate closely with our current neighbors of Diamond Springs and Camino and keeping us closely represented by those, with those communities in the same district is important to us, something like that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's interesting, there's a, how down in Eldorado Hills, the South County District comes up and has that little.
Yeah.
Little loop right there, yeah.
I'm not sure what that is either.
They used to. District 2 used to have more Eldorado Hills 10 years ago before they redistricted it.
Redistricted it? It has three D's on the end, yeah.
So that's, that's really all I have. I just wanted to present those maps tonight. I don't know that it's necessarily that we have to take action tonight. You may want to wait and see what other, what else comes forward.
Do we know what the timeline is for this with the county?
I, I don't. I looked at it. I know they've got another public meeting scheduled on it. I want to say early November.
Yeah, it's, it's not too far off.
Yeah, I think the final would have to be in by November, like November 7th.
Is that what it is, November 7th?
I'd have to look, but it's coming up pretty quick.
That sounds right.
Final decision, I think, in January.
So we have one more meeting this month, if you wanted to wait or if you want to provide direction, we could, in terms of a letter that you want to send or something, or if you want to do the resolution, that's an option too, but.
December 21, they have to do it. November 7, maps due to the BOS for, for the public. And October 24th, maps drawing, tools, maps submission process education. So I think that's this Friday. No. Okay. With this, any questions of staff? Okay, I'm just going to open it up for public comment. If there's anybody who wishes to comment on this item. Anybody? Anybody? Okay.
Does this?
Kirk? No, okay, just checking. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for council.
Because I really don't, I'm not too sure about, does this in any way change like our fire department, this doesn't?
No. No. Their, their boundary remains the same, so it won't affect them.
You know, it's, it's kind of like who we want to be in our district-
Right.
And, and who we want to be our neighbors in, and why, and I think, you know, that, that's the letter we need to send, you know.
But I, I really think it's a good idea that maybe we do, maybe get together and drew our own map and show them why. I mean, that would answer, you know, some questions.
Working.
I don't know how much work that is, because we'd have to per-
I haven't played with the tool that they have, so I don't, I don't know either what it, what it takes, but...
Let's ask Pierre.
I'll just comment, it's a lot of work, because what, what, what they're striving to do, and I only know this from, I mean, maybe, uh, the tools have been modified and they're much easier to use, but I used to work a little bit with the surveyor's office many years ago on, on doing redistricting. It's probably a couple decades ago that I actually worked on one, but, you know, you have to balance the population, and so, using, uh, the GIS, uh, system at the county surveyor's office, they were able to do that, uh, much more simply than just drawing lines on the map. You may be not providing that balance and population that's required.
They, they do have an online tool that gives you that information. I haven't done that, I've talked to some people that play with it, and they said it's a difficult thing to do. The tool is not super simple.
Um, I've got a couple comments on this. So, when I think, thank you Dennis, when I think about, you know, what our district representative should, the needs of our district, you know, and what impacts Placerville, it's the effects of agritourism, the effects of Highway 50, um, land use in kind of a semi-urban area, um, economic development being a center for shop, people shopping and, um, getting the things that they need. And I think it's really important for our representation at the county level to not be pulled in two different directions within their own district. Um, and I, you know, a couple of those maps that put Placerville with the North County, which is very, very rural, I think that, and they're not on Highway 50, I think that, um, it would be really easy for a supervisor to be pulled in two completely different directions, um, within their own district, which I don't, I don't think that's good for the needs of Placerville. So, definitely when I look at these maps, you know, and then just from a personal level, I mean, when I think of the Placerville community, I really think of the agritourism of Camino and the, the wineries and kind of, you know, the, a little bit of South County that feed, you know, or supply business to our restaurants downtown, um, and, you know, the neighborhoods and, and Diamond Springs and, and just, just around Placerville. So, you know, like, this map looks good. I, I think, I think my preference is definitely that we stay in the same district with Camino and Diamond Springs and, you know, as, as close to our, our current boundary as possible. I think our current boundary is quite good in terms of reflecting our needs.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I basically agree with those sentiments. I think about Placerville and our surrounding areas, all of rural El Dorado County comes here to do their shopping, their working, whatever, and so, working on the immediate borders around us, I think are really important. We're looking forward, um, to Apple Hill and trying to solve those freeway problems. We have the Diamond Springs Parkway and Missouri Flat. I think all of that needs to remain under one district, otherwise, you know, as Kara said, multiple supervisors in that district is gonna make it really hard to work together, um, and get, get things done. Um, I would agree with some sort, I mean, District Three, I think I read, has to grow by 13%. So our, our district is gonna get bigger a little bit in, in some direction, but I would a hundred percent agree that Camino and Diamond Springs needs to remain in our district.
Well, you just stop and think about everything that we've been working on lately, and, you know, to have, to be split, or have a supervisor have to think of two different, and like you were, you've all said, you know, having to work with more than one supervisor to understand what we're trying to achieve and accomplish, you know, um, no, I agree. I, I really think we need to fight for, to try to keep this all together.
If you, well, if you think about it, um, Tahoe has its own identity.
Right.
And that district is, may not have the, may not be as interested in, in dealing with if Camino went towards Tahoe.
Correct.
Um, and George, and Georgetown, you know, and the, and the divide over there, it's kind of the same thing.
Exactly.
If they have a, if we have a piece, I don't know that they would want a piece of us.
No, totally different, they're totally different, you know.
You know, I, you know, and, and, you know, we're thinking of, this is for, what, the next 10 years. I think we go through this every 10 years, so we, you know, it's a long-range idea. And, uh, and how, the challenges that we're gonna be addressing, um, kind of fit within that scope of what our, what our current boundaries are, because that, I think that, that could, what was it, the, uh, the existing one, the community, what was the one map?
The city, city redistricting is, I think, is closest to our current-
The city base.
Number one.
Yeah.
Map one, um...
One, three, and the chamber, I think.
Yeah. Those are, you know, those all seem fairly, fairly close to-
We said map, and you said, the other day, you said one and three were the closest.
Yes, yeah.
But now there's the chamber one, which-
The chamber is a new one.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's interesting, and-
The chamber's pretty close.
Yeah.
Correct.
But I think, yeah, just, you know, keeping our district along the Highway 50 corridor, the agritourism area, um, so...
You just look at the issues that have come up right now, just like Dennis was just saying. Tahoe has its own issues, and they have one supervisor to represent those issues. Lori Parlin's district has her issues, and she's, you know, I mean, everybody's representing their own, you know-
Right.
And I, I think that's the way it should be, it makes sense.
It's, it's really a battle over the growth in El Dorado Hills. How do they rearrange it down there to acknowledge the increase in population-
Right.
While balancing their needs down there? And really, we don't want to mess, we don't want to mess with us too much up here.
Yeah.
They can figure it out down there, because that's more-
They don't even know they live in Placerville, in El Dorado County, half of them, they think they're, you know...
Well, it's a, it's a lot about the district, between District Four, uh, one and, and, and two, and not five and three. So it's, you know, kind of let them duke it out down there, but, you know, we like, uh, in my opinion, we like where we're at.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the, you know, for instance, the Hydol alternative, or the community region-based alternative, um, our supervisor would have to drastically relearn what her community, I mean, it would be a completely different community that she would be representing if that happened.
And I, I think-
Which I don't, I don't think is good for them.
No, and what if we had a supervisor then that, that was elected, say, the next go-round or something, that came from down there? They don't know us.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
I, I just think it's just really, I don't know.
Well, you, you bring up a good point, I, I haven't really thought of, is that, you know, where do we want our, our, our representative to come from?
Right.
And, uh, you know, with, with one of these, um, the community region, they could, theoretically, they can come from, from down, down the road quite a bit, um, all the way up to Rescue, and all the way out to, well, you know, Georgetown, cool, and Pilot Hill.
Well, we see that, how it happens on a state and, and national level, what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're forgotten, you know, a lot.
Oh, yeah. So, what do we want to do here? We need to probably do something and button this up, put a bow on it, or kick it out.
Well, if it's, if it's too much to do our own map, then I think we ought to write a pretty solid letter, and, you know, make our statement and make it really, you know, and give really good, concrete reasons why we feel like we do.
I, I agree. I mean, again, we're the county seat, I think there's something to be said for that-
Absolutely.
And the communities of interest that surround us.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, even just that 95667 zip code, uh, which is a pretty large area, but at least, as I think Dennis said, you know, folks think they live in Placerville as well, the city of-
And should be in one district.
They should be in, they should be in one district.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I just don't see us going too far south or too far north. Uh, I mean, we're pretty much down the middle there, between 50 and, uh, Pleasant Valley. Um, that's really the, the community of interest that I see. So if we did a letter, you know, maybe something along those lines. But I do, I do think being the, the county seat is, is an important aspect to us, and keeping that area fairly tight.
You know, our, our planning commission has a sphere of influence that, that we have in the city that helps us identify our area, where we, uh, also where we draw from our planning commissioners that don't necessarily have to be exactly right in the city limits. But our sphere of influence, you know, when it comes to, um, yeah, I think that's a really good term, and when you start talking about our district in terms of our sphere of influence, it's not all the way out to, to the North County line, or some of these other things all the way down to Rescue. It's really this core area that we are currently in. And I think that's an, I think that's a fair word to use, or phrase to use for this.
And, you know, along those lines, question for Pierre. Pierre, does this technically cut through the middle of our core of influence, and that, like, the Hydol alternative? Because it would, seems like it would be, you know, not very wise to put our core of influence in two different districts.
I wasn't involved in the preparation of that alternative, but I would say that that is just an, it's an option that, that is just thrown in for consideration, is probably not a viable option for those reasons, because it does divide a community where you want to have a cohesive voting block that has similar interests and concerns.
Okay.
Nicely said, Pierre. Thank you. Um, how, how, how do you see this going, Cleve?
What, from what I'm hearing, perhaps what we can do is if, uh, you would like us to prepare a letter, staff can do that and bring it back for your next meeting for approval.
Okay.
Um, and then we can forward that to them, uh, prior to the, the deadline.
Could you maybe gave, give it to us ahead of time that we could make comments?
Um, as soon as I can, yeah.
No, but I mean, instead of waiting for the, the meeting and then giving our-
Well, no, I would give, I would give it with your agenda packet, but you're saying prior to that, too?
Yeah.
That'll be a brown action, so I would-
That's what I-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would be worried about, too.
I would ask in the letter that you specify, um, Camino and Diamond Springs in our district. You know, we have so much going on with both those communities.
El Dorado and Diamond?
Well, I mean, I, I saw two alternatives that pulled Camino out of our district-
Yeah.
And that kind of alarmed me, so, I, I mean, I was, my focus was really on Camino and Diamond Springs.
The community, yeah. The community of Camino.
Yeah.
And there was also an alternative that has Camino kind of split, and, which I-
I think they're, but I also think that El Dorado and Diamond are important, even though we don't have a lot going on now, but it's still, it's just so close, you know, and I just think...
All right. Do you have enough information?
I think that's enough direction that I can take that and bring back, uh, a draft letter, and I'll get it, I'll only be able to give it to you at the meeting, but we can make changes at the meeting, too, that also.
Yeah, I mean, I think basically we're saying is we really don't want those lines moving too much in any, any direction, you know?
Exactly.
I realize we have to grow, so they have to move.
And could you tell us where, how far out our sphere goes?
Uh, yeah, I can work with Pierre on that.
Definitely Missouri Flat is part of the sphere, and it looks like Missouri Flat is not a, um, and it's Missouri Flat-
You're talking about our official city sphere?
Yes.
Yes, and it looks like Missouri Flat has pulled all the way out of the Hydol alternative.
It's not, our sphere of influence is not that much outside of our city limits.
No, it's not.
Well, I'm thinking, uh, because I remember when we had the big-
But it is slightly to the south of Highway 50.
And it should include Missouri Flat.
Well, no, our, our true sphere of influence within the, that's cod, is it codified in our city? There's a map that shows our sphere of influence, it's, it's only a couple, not that far outside of city limits.
Right.
Yes, if I can comment just briefly on that, it's not, as you've been saying, it's not that far outside of the existing corporate limits, but it does extend a little bit into, say, the Smith Flat area, and I think there's some extension, uh, northward.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Where you have some areas that are a little more extensive-
Still possible.
That's within the city sphere, but to the south, uh, not so much, as you have on the east and the north.
Remember when we were having all that chaos going on about, um, I can't remember even what was gonna be allowed, but it was, like, the people on 49 were concerned that it was in close proximity, something the county was gonna do. Um, this is a long time ago, but anyway, I, I know that our sphere runs up there, too, about that area.
Right.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and put a bow on this.
Fine.
Any final comments? All right, good. All right, thank you very much, I thought, thought that was a great conversation, um, interesting conversation.
Actually Dennis, I've got one question.
Oh, boy.
Is there, what's, what's the public outreach, and when do they have an opportunity to comment? Because I think that they should, we should help get the word out.
All I know is through, through the county process, and that they've been talking about, I think they're having, uh, it on the, the board, on board meetings, and I think there was some special meetings, too.
There is, there's a community meeting, I thought I read on the 21st, or 28th, 28th, I think.
Maybe we could get a newspaper article or something, get it out, or put it on our website, and-
Hopefully-
Because I don't think people really realize.
I think it's one of those things that nobody's paying attention until it affects them, and then they're gonna accept.
And then they might be shocked.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of-
Surprise.
Normal.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, moving on to item 13, council reports from other agency meetings. El Dorado County Transit Authority, we did have a meeting, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Yes. Anybody wish to?
I've been bad at recording, making all the notes.
Why did you go into, why were you so long?
I know.
And then you, it was on the batteries, or on the, um-
Yes.
The electric.
The presentation on the zero emission-
The zero emission.
Bus conversion plan.
Right.
We did, which I can't talk about.
So it was-
I'm trying to remember why it took so long.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, well, I remember that we were sitting there waiting for the Transportation Commission to start. It took us about an hour.
But I think you can tell that they are, it's definitely, they're going to, you're going to convert your buses to electric buses.
Yes, and this item was, I'll just talk about both the Transportation Commission and the Transit Authority because this item was on both agendas. But we are in the process of researching how to convert our bus fleet to 100% zero emission. And so, we had a presentation about that. And it's going to take a while, and we're waiting on some, the technology to catch up to the mandate. But that is coming down the line.
And so far, the expectation is you're going to have to add at least one more vehicle to the fleet to be able to accommodate the use of batteries and the longevity of the batteries.
And it's going to cost a lot of money.
It's going to cost a lot of money. It's, well, Michael, you talked about it earlier on.
A complete waste of money if you go in from a natural gas vehicles that are very good. And the, it's almost a minimus, the difference between a natural gas bus and an electric one, especially when you take into account the rural areas and the steep climbs and other things that you have to do, but whatever.
All right. So, what's your real opinion on that?
Yeah.
All right. So, any, so any really interesting information from LAFCO?
LAFCO is in the process of recruiting a new EO. Oh, there is an open seat for alternative public representative if anyone is interested in serving on the LAFCO board. And then the fire MSRs we were working on has all gotten kind of pushed back through the Caledor Fire, so not much is going on.
All right, SECOG, Michael.
Biggest thing, again, was an update on both state and federal activities in regards to funding. There's $38 million that SECOG was able to procure for the Green Means Go program that will eventually be allocated throughout the region. So, we'll be able to compete for some of those dollars out of 100 mil, or out of, was it, we were asking for 100 million, but we got 38 million. So, still pretty decent on that front. And then on the federal side, the only update is that there is no update because nobody knows exactly when they're going to get a deal done. You know, the original date was the 27th of September. Now, it's the, what, 31st of October?
And this is for what, Michael?
This is for the federal stimulus bill. So, no one's touching the first bill, that trillion dollar, which I would consider the hard infrastructure bill. Nobody wants to open up that can of worms again, it seems like. But that, whatever that final number's going to be from, you know, 1.9 trillion to 3.5, that's still very much up in the air. So, to be continued on that front.
Good luck, huh?
Yes.
Government hardware. Okay. Pioneer Community Energy.
We had a meeting, but there was nothing really to comment on.
Okay. Fire Safe Council, really?
I wasn't able to attend, but my understanding is that Chief Wren gave a report on a upcoming evacuation plan. And that'll be brought forth. I talked to Cleve about it, and you're on for one of the future meetings to give us a report. And then, of course, all the things that we've been talking about, the districts and, you know, fire and everything, so.
And you guys are actually making some progress.
Yeah.
And in your coordination with Mark Egbert and those discussions, I think there's a lot of real positive momentum with the potential monies coming available.
You know, really and truly, the biggest problem right now is getting people to clear their property. And we're trying to find funds to, you know, to take care of what they remove. And it's very expensive and it's hard to...
Yeah, 400 bucks a dumpster for the waste management isn't exactly the best.
Well, my understanding is now that, you know, there's so much chipping going on that they've run out of places to, nobody wants to buy the chips anymore, and they've run out of places to dump them. So, I don't know what they're going to do.
Interesting. And they're still, and chips also provide, also provide a lot of...
Mulch.
Well, mulch, but they also do a lot of carbon emissions themselves in decomposition.
So, they can't burn them.
So, it's a whole nother thing with chips, but I digress. All right, bringing it back.
Oh, and then I did, Karen and I did attend the homeless, the Eldorado Housing. So, and I plan to go. They're going to, the Federated Church has let them use their fireside room on Monday nights at 7:00 o'clock if anybody's interested. And I have to disagree with Pastor Gainsborough that I really do think that it looked, it appeared to me that they were progressing with ideas, et cetera.
I think you were saying that in...
I told you.
Sarcasm, sarcastically.
Well, some of, but he said that, you know, nothing's happening, and I think it is. I mean, what I observed.
Well, that's true. All right. Request for future agenda items, anybody?
Yes, we could have an update on the recall for the city, in the city of Plasterville.
Hmm. What recall? Oh, sorry.
The potential recall?
I don't know. Okay, thank you.
As an upcoming agenda item, or could we just have a staff report tonight?
Yeah, that's a better idea. I like that.
I'm good with that, too.
Okay, yeah, Cleve included that.
So, do it as what?
As your staff report, part of your staff report. Just an update.
Oh, okay. Do you have an update? Is that inappropriate?
Oh, you want me to do that tonight?
Yes.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay, so, since we have no request for future agenda items, item number 15?
Can I mention one thing before you go to that, just quickly? I was just informed that there is a redistricting public meeting Thursday night at 6:00 in the board chambers.
This Thursday night?
This Thursday night at 6:00 in the board chambers.
That's right.
We're all tied up. There's, oh, after the Goldbug Park. Okay. Oh, yeah, don't forget that. You got to mention Goldbug Park.
Oh, thank you. Yes, we are, I'll let Cleve put that under his item because it's not on my agenda.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, moving on, item number 15, city manager and staff reports. I'm going to start off with Cleve.
Okay, so, yes, we are doing a, what I want to call it, a plaque unveiling, recognizing the founders, I would say, of Goldbug Park, the original development committee. And that is Thursday evening from 4:00 to 6:00. I don't know if we'll be that long, but it's more of just of a reception type thing and recognizing those people. And so, anyone is invited to attend at that time. It's again, Thursday evening from 4:00 to 6:00 out of Goldbug Park.
All right, and thank you very much. And recall?
So, the petitioners had until, their deadline was actually, I believe, Saturday, but because it fell on the Saturday, and Mona, I know, is listening to this, too. She can correct me if I'm wrong, we gave them until Monday at 9:00 to turn in their signatures. I was, I was there and nothing happened. We did not receive anything, and so I have not heard anything, no calls or any information that's come in. So, anything to add to that, Mona?
Excuse me, nothing further except for because the requisite signatures were not submitted, it seems that the recall will not be moving forward.
Right.
What did she say?
Mona, I do have one question. If nothing was turned, do the paper, does the paperwork have to still be turned in, like, signatures, even if there wasn't enough to qualify? Or do they just sort of, you know, go into a trash can somewhere?
No, it's ultimately their choice whether they wish to withdraw the petition before that date. And withdrawing would also mean not producing the signatures, producing the signatures and having city clerk to count to see if they're sufficient or moving forward. In this case, because nothing was submitted at all, we are going to basically conclude that this was, they withdrew their recall.
Okay, thank you.
Boy, a waste of time. All right.
And money.
Go ahead.
That's all I have.
All right, and then receive and file September's 2021 police report. Does anybody have any questions for our chief of police on this current report? Do you have any significant, any significant comments there for us, chief?
We continue to, we continue to hold steady about 21, 2200 calls per month, which is an increase over the last couple of years. 20, I believe in 2019, we were at 1,871 this time. And 2020, we were at 1,920. This past month, we were 2144. Again, a majority of our calls are narcotic-related calls. Some of the other offenses you see, like the theft or the disturbance, do have narcotics sprinkled around in there. It's just the primary charge that we took action on, that we know we can get prosecution on are the actual penal code violations. Again, after Prop 47, it just kind of chewed up everything related to narcotics. So, we're having a tough time dealing with that aspect of it. Until, you know, we go back to a consequence-based system, it's just going to kind of be a normal thing right now. Yeah. But our men and women are doing a fantastic job. They're, they're busy, but they're still motivated, and they're getting out there, getting the job done.
So, I have a question for you. And, uh-oh. Has the methodology for counting these service demands changed? I mean, so those, to, in recognition of the increase, has anything changed? Because I know that you have changed a little bit of things around there since you took over. This is about the same time. Has any, has any of the methodology for collecting the data changed in terms of recognition of service demands?
I think external influences, such as the releasing of inmates from prison, has caused an increase in these calls. We started seeing that trend upward in 2020 when the governor did announce that he's, he's releasing inmates. You know, data is showing statewide that that has been a contributing factor to the increase in calls. You know, we've got a, we've got a very motivated police department. They're out there, if they're not getting calls for service, they're out there proactively doing what they can to protect the community. So, that will cause an increase as well under officer-initiated activities. So, they're just not waiting for things to happen. They're actually out there doing it.
All right. All right, thank you.
Question, chief. On the 290 registrants, are those, are any of those ankle monitored? Or are those all just sort of, they have to come in or register with the department when they come into our jurisdiction?
About half of them are ankle monitored. And again, that's, this shows an increase as well. Traditionally, we were hovering around 20. We're up to 43 now. So, we have a great relationship with Eldorado County Probation, but they are as well inundated with everybody that's been pushed out of prisons and now are required to, to carry them as a caseload. So, they're, they're doing most of it through ankle monitoring programs. And we are, we are responding to requests for assistance from them when ankle monitors die or they're cut off. So, and that, that happens quite regularly, actually.
Got you. Okay, thank you. And then I saw the, so the 5150s, is that just an oddity that we had such an increase in those numbers? I saw like it spiked all around.
Because they're out there getting them.
Those are, yeah. So, and a portion of that, as well, circling back to drugs, you know, when, you know, a person is a habitual drug user, it's going to cause some residual issues with, you know, with their mental capacity. So, we're seeing the, we're seeing the effects of Prop 47, 57, yeah.
Were there any other bills signed as of the 10th that are going to make even less crimes or crimes even less so, that you have even, you know, more people getting off the hook?
No, not particularly. I think they're just aiming strictly at the profession.
Yeah.
So, the attacks are coming to the profession.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, Karen.
Am I understanding that the number of sex offenders, registered sex offenders, has doubled because of releases from prison?
That's, yes.
That's alarming because it's pretty hard to go to jail for sex offenses. Very few people actually go to jail for those. And if you are in jail, it was a serious offense. So, if that's what's contributing to our...
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot, you know, it's very, it's very concerning to see some of the codes and classifications that they're considering to be nonviolent that they're releasing out in the community. These are, these are predators, and they're, they belong in jail. They belong in prison.
Yeah, I think unless they're rated as HR, high-risk sex offender, then they get, before they're released, they'll get monitored by Department of Mental Health, DMH facility. They can, so they can go to a DMH facility potentially forever, but if you're not classified HR SO, you know, even if you have, like, ludocivius with the, you know, under 14 or something, you're still out on the street, potentially homeless with an ankle monitor.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, chief, for candid comments. Appreciate it. Onto our fire report. Top that. So, I guess, I guess you're big, and actually you can't, because the, how are things settling down with Caledor Fire? And I know that they're opening up almost every place for access. Here, it's still burning in some places a little bit.
There are still a few areas, mainly over off of the 88 side, around the Kirkwood and Capels Road area, lake area, where there's still some activity. And most of that is contained, but it's in that area that, you know, is what we refer to as being rocked out, a lot of granite. So, it's really hard to get in there. It's ultimately probably going to take the winter weather to contain those spots. But as far as our agency and I think the local fire districts, with the exception of Pioneer Fire District, who's still heavily impacted, you know, the community of Grizzly Flat, we're kind of getting back to operation normal with some settling in post, post-Caledor. Couple other activities with us, we did, I don't know if you copied on our social media, we had six new firefighters that we just brought online. So, for us right now, today, that leaves us just down one. So, we're, we're looking pretty good. All of our crews are in great spirits. They're, they're trained, they're ready, and just waiting for any calls of service that we may need. Coiled springs. We're not out trolling for, for calls, just to pad the stats. But it's cool. Stop by, we've got coffee for you. But, you know, we did, we did see, in all seriousness, in the first couple of weeks of September, we did see a spike in some of the COVID calls. You probably noticed in our stats, there was an increase in the medical responses on both sides. That's kind of tapered off for the last couple of weeks, which is good to see for the community that that's kind of, kind of winding down. And then really just kind of a reminder that, believe it or not, once we had the little bit of precipitation, a little bit of cooler temps, crews started responding, people out burning.
Really?
And, you know, it's, hey, it's October, you know? And, you know, just personally, I was doing yard work over the weekend, and you couldn't tell that we had any precipitation last week. It was, it was a very small amount. So, really just for the public, it's not burn season yet. Things are still incredibly dry, and despite what the calendar says, the fire risk is still very elevated.
Have you had any campfires that you've had to attend?
Campfires? No, we have not had any recent campfires. That is kind of a topic of discussion at county level. Actually, I had a meeting this afternoon. We're looking at countywide through our fire prevention officers redoing, kind of cleaning up the ordinance and making some amendments to it to, to better identify the parameters on when you can and cannot have campfires and what actually truly is going to be determined to be a campfire versus, you know, barbecue in your backyard or a fire pit in your backyard. So, crews are working on that countywide.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any questions? Okay, moving on, upcoming items. I'm going to read a few of them, and then we will, let's see, parking code revision, parking restrictions, various, in various locations, the MBI amendment for Clay Street Agreement Fee Schedule Update, fiscal year 2020, 21, 22, NPDES support, Parking Garage Maintenance Plan Consultation Contract, look forward to that one, extra mild day proclamation. And there's a few more there if you wish to get online and check it out on our agenda. With that, I am going to adjourn the meeting at exactly 7:30. I wish everybody a good evening, and thank you, staff, for, for your gracious time. And while we hosted Mr. Driscoll and his recognition for 30 years of service, I think it was time well spent to give, to honor him and, and go through that. I think it was, yeah, he's a good guy. So, yes, sir.
Kind of one comment before you officially adjourn?
Yes.
Or did you already? Just quickly?
Kind of did.
Your next meeting, October 26th, we have two very important presentations. One is on SB 1383, organics recycling, and that will be important for you to understand what's happening there and potential costs coming into all of that. The second is the broadband feasibility study. It went as a draft to our PEC committee last week, and they've made comments, and we'll be bringing that back to you on the 26th. So...
All right. Thank you, Cleve.
And I also mentioned the short-term vacation rental. Are we, when are we going to address that?
It's, it's on that list, and we're, we're trying to get it ready to bring forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you very much.